...with a little bit in terms of having everyone kind of stay on point and we have the parking lot, Sarah's the keeper of the parking lot, right? So cool with that?
Cool.
The folder. So what we're going to try to do, I know we've talked about this in the past, is let the presenters get through their presentation. We're really going to try this time. And then leave, you know, maybe ten, fifteen minutes or whatever at the end for a Q and A. So, that's our big challenge this year. All right? So there you go.
Here are our test cases.
Yeah.
We've always done that in the past.
Well, we're not very good.
Well, maybe I've always gone first and you've always been really good.
So, we are going to take the consent agenda first. Do I have a...
Motion to approve.
Thank you, a second.
Second.
Okay, so moved. Any discussion?
I have to abstain from either the seventh or the 21st, I can't remember which one.
Because you weren't here, right?
There were three of us that weren't here, but one of them's not here, so.
I think that was the 21st.
Twenty first, yeah.
I think I was here.
Twenty first.
Yeah.
I think it was Julie.
Yeah.
Okay. So just so you know that.
Okay. Any discussion other than the abstention? No? Okay. All those in favor? Are you agreeing?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? No? Okay, moving on.
And they're abstaining on the 21st.
Oh, two abstains. Okay. Thank you.
I got you.
Okay. Thank you. Moving to the subcommittee reports, facilities.
Oh, wait, we forgot the minutes.
The minutes are...
Oh, I'm sorry. Never mind. Wait, I need to go back, I'm sorry. I just had a correction on one of the minutes. From August 7th, I just wanted to say where it says supports and interventions on the report. It said specifically concerned about the preponderance of, it would be requests and exchange of new photos, instead of new photos being exchanged.
Request and exchange.
Request for an exchange of.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else? No? Okay. Subcommittee reports, elementary facilities. Caroline, Annie?
Hi.
Hi.
I feel like we haven't had anything with the... I feel like we've been on a little bit of a nice break, to be honest with you, we're getting ready to hear it again. The parent group has a site up on Facebook, quote, "Yes for the Kids," and they've been pushing out a lot of information, and they're trying to use that, that's like pretty much just for pushing information out. There are open houses that they're going to be attending, I think Annie's going to the Essex one, you know?
Yes. And that is...
September 20th.
And then there's this back-to-school night, which is when?
Tomorrow. Five to seven.
Yes, I'll go to that, and then you...
And then there's Memorial One, which I'm going to, to give, because the people who are heading the parent group have elementary age kids, so they're going to come over here for the middle high school open house nights, and that's Shoshi and Abby. And Rotary has invited us to come speak to them on September 23rd or something like that. And Remco's going to do that, and possibly Shoshi's husband.
I think that's a Saturday, April 23rd.
But it's not the 23rd, it's somewhere around in there. I'll let you know, it's at Beach Street Cafe.
Oh, nice.
And then tomorrow night we're meeting with the Board of Selectmen. Andy Olderman is going to be presenting to them, FinCom Board of Selectmen, just to put final stamp on everything and hopefully get their approval for the project.
And they have all the information that...
Yes.
She went on that for a while. Okay.
And then the Pat Group set up tours at Memorial. Mom was today, no one showed up unfortunately. They did that in coordination with Election Day, but nobody came to tour the building. But as long as we're doing it, and that's all we can do, and then there's another one on September 12th at 9:00 a.m.
Do they want any of us there?
No.
Okay.
This is like, this is the parent group and this is what they're kind of in charge of kicking out the report back to you guys.
And I've heard there's an Essex parent group now.
Yes.
There are some Essex folks who are helping.
Yep. And we're going to get them all together.
We've been dump, doing the dump at the Essex on Saturdays, and I also set up office hours with Brendan, etc., I forget what they were, they were Thursday night, I think six, five to seven, or six to eight, I'm not sure. Just, I was going to...
Where's that?
At the town hall.
Oh, town hall.
That was when I was going to talk to some folks who I, that are opinion leaders, that I want to just clarify that they know what's going on, it's a good time to be there. So, that setup.
I think we're, we're in this thing together, it's us brainstorming, messaging between the two towns, because it's going to be different, as we've kind of learned how we share things.
Yep.
So, it's really important that we get this up and going, because we have four weeks until town meeting.
Five weeks.
Five weeks until town meeting.
Yeah.
So, this is kind of the real push.
Yeah. So, anything you can do to help us be at some of these things would be great.
And we'll let you know.
The two community meeting dates that are on the book, the 26th, did you say?
I have not said those. Yeah, so September 26th and October 10th are community meetings, which we have to get together to talk about how and what we're...
But those are the building committee, informational, district consent information out about that.
Okay, so those are taking place at the normal business of the building committee?
We only have two...
So, six p.m.?
Well, we haven't decided yet.
Okay.
We're going to do same format as before, in the morning, the evening.
Okay.
We need to, yeah, so...
Regroup and get together.
Yeah.
But I would pencil those dates in as a save, at least for the evening.
Yeah, what were the two dates again?
September 26th.
We have 26th and the 10th of October.
I thought we were going to try to get one more in there.
We are, and that's the one that's up in the air, I did have a conversation with John, he had some feedback on, and some ideas about maybe some outreach to grab, some folks to come in for the tours, maybe reach out to the council on aging, maybe having a plus some people over, instead of just kind of hoping some people show, so he had some good feedback on that today. And just, one thought was, do we put in an informational post-open house? And the pros and the cons are, you've got people there, but they're with their kids. So, they may stay, but you're going to, it's not going to be, I don't know if it'll be a captive audience, because you're going to have a lot of commotion, and it doesn't end at a hard time. Typically, it'll go to seven or 7:30, so you might get people coming in, people hanging on, so he has no issue with doing it, it was just a question of whether or not we would actually get the outcome that we want. I don't think those nights are necessarily tour nights, I think those are just more handing out information.
Well, there was a question as to whether we wanted to build in one of the informational meetings.
Oh, into that.
I think that's a good idea, because you've got a captive audience.
Okay, we'll talk about it.
Yep.
Just one suggestion, based on feedback on who we deal with, I spent time talking with the compost people, not that I am choosing, on the concerns they were, they voice around, have we really done the homework, have we really put the people through, so, you know, have we really vetted out the concept for Memorial School, they do not have kids, they're not connected, so I think anything to just remind people of the sheer amount of effort that's gone in up till now with the professionals, and also, I was half kidding when I said celebrating the fact that the bridge has been rebuilt, as well as the solar panels are too, very fiscally conservative, long-range things that have been done, that I think showcase how we run the district, and particularly having the very tight iron expenses, so, coming up to where we're going. People are like, oh, this is Palace or both, no, it's not, every little penny counts.
Okay, thank you, guys. Finance committee. It's been very quiet, we've had nothing going on, we're looking forward to tomorrow night, as you guys pointed out, with FinCom and the Board of Selectmen of Manchester, so we're looking for a positive outcome from that meeting. Moving on to policy.
It's also been quiet. We'll get back up and running.
It is on my, now that everything's kind of in, settling, we will start to get some calendars out.
Yes.
Negotiation team.
Yeah, we need to approve this on the line of understanding for the one-year contract that we discussed the rest ending.
Okay. So, can I have a motion? Are you guys okay with that? You want to discuss it?
We need a motion first, and then a...
Okay.
Move to approve.
Move to approve the FY19 memorandum of understanding for a one-year collective bargaining agreement with the Manchester Essex Teachers Association.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, is there any value to adding a date up here in the title, so it's clear? I mean, I know it's in the first paragraph, just something that is brings, makes it more clear that it's this year's MLA.
Sure.
So, just add 2018? Is that okay? Sorry, it's... So, anything you'd like to tell us about this?
Yeah, I think we discussed it a lot last meeting, so I think we need a lot more discussion, really looking forward to upcoming negotiations this year.
IBP?
IBP, yeah.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, it's such a motion carries. Thank you. Subcommittee's report.
Mine is quick. The opening was great, except for the heat, so that pushes into a new category of how to deal with the weather. The two half-days, I think if we had a do-over and had some experience with it, because this is the first time we've ever gone through cancellation or delay or early release for heat, we probably would have just made the call at the beginning of the week, so everyone had a sense of how it would shake out. But I think it worked well, it allowed us to get things up and running, people were able to split things over two days, instead of just the one, but it kept the momentum of the beginning of the year in play, and today was hot and very uncomfortable, but the time for the building to kind of reset over the weekend, and the temperatures going down to a somewhat normal level tonight, should be enough for us to not have an issue tomorrow, too much of an issue tomorrow. So I think what I've been saying to people is, if you get questions, think, it's the temperatures inside the building, not outside the building, that are really at play, so when we're monitoring, we're getting reports from all the schools, from the principals and from Jay and his team, when you start to see rooms edging up to 90 without occupancy, you can be, you know, pretty sure when you put in 25 kids and a teacher in the noon sun, you're going to start to really get to some unbearable levels. Just something for us to think about over time, in terms of, you know, capital investment in this building, and then the two elementaries as we build them. Cafeteria was a big part of the equation, because when we did kind of the Tuesday evening before school was supposed to start, we went up to the cath and got the report from Jay, about four o'clock in the afternoon, it was still in the 90s, and that was, you know, we had teachers in there for a little bit in the morning, but it just baked all day, so the thought of having to do meals for kids, and turn the ovens on, and put 300, so that, that's a big part of the calculus when we're making the determination. So, we'll think about it as we put the calendar together for next year, this is a new territory. I know you'll probably get the question about why don't we start after Labor Day, I think the heat is going to bring that conversation back, but as I've spoken about in conversations with a few of you, as soon as we hit the snow days, we get reminded of why we started this, this school year a little bit earlier, so we have some honeymoon at the end of June. So, you know, it's all good conversation for the calendar when it comes up. I'll end with enrollment. We have three big visits coming up this year, the Japan delegation is coming back to observe inclusion in all of our schools, they'll be here on the 19th, so we'd love for you to come and join us on the tours and for lunch on that day. The commissioner will be visiting us on the 5th of October, and we did get our date for the coordinated program review, that's the compliance review of everything from special education to Title IX and civil rights. They'll be here the week of the 21st, in, the week of January 21st, and a report on that is usually at least six months out, and then get posted to the DESC website and sent to us, so that's a very formal process. Really good news came in just after I sent some things out to you last Thursday, the middle, not the middle high school, the high school was ranked fifth by Boston Magazine. I think that's the highest ranking we've ever achieved as a district, so kudos to them, but like we say in any of these circumstances, it's a K-12 process to get the kids ready, because a big part of it is the assessment scores. So, just great kids, great teachers, great outcomes, so everyone's really excited about that. That's only one measure. I think, I saw in a lot of the comments, I think we've become especially proud of this, because we haven't been focusing on this as a goal. This is a byproduct of our other work, and we're hoping that the social-emotional investment is making the environment better for kids, so that their performance is increasing, because we can't show pause, but at least, I think sometimes investing so much time and energy in that realm, people become fearful that the rigor may be tailing off, and maybe it's not producing the same type of outcomes, but at least we have evidence to show, by investing our time in it, we're not doing, we're still achieving academically. So that was a really great way to go into the long weekend, and as promised, the enrollment report. What I want to do for our next session is do kind of a side-by-side analysis of last year to this year, because it looks like our numbers are creeping back up again, it may settle a little bit into October, but our total enrollment's at 1399 as of today, that's not accounting for students who are not a district placement, we're close to 1420, 1425 if we add those students in. The elementary schools, it's about even if you take the total, you know, some, some sections are a little higher, some are a little lower, but we're right in the benchmark range for all of the classes, so that shows good utilization of our staff, and class averages in both schools are just about 19, so that's something we try to keep an eye on, to make sure everything's balanced. You'll see the middle high school is kind of where the, the big bubble still exists, with sixth grade being at about, being at 130, seventh grade being on the smaller side at 113, but that eighth and ninth grade and 10th grade being those, you know, mid 120s to 130, so the real bulk of the kids are there. And, you know, the 11th and 12th grade are still on the lighter side, or the more traditional class sizes that we would have. So, the other thing to note is, school choice, we brought in 10 students, two per grade level at the elementary, with the exception of second grade. And then the real story is new resident enrollment, we have 58 new students in the district.
Wow.
What I'll try to do is pair that, I don't have what we call the tide chart, so we don't know how many kids exited from move-outs, we know what our exiting senior class was and our entering kindergarten class, we know there's about a 25 student differential there, so we'll run the comparison of students who moved out and students who moved in, but I think what we're seeing, this is anecdotal, because I didn't do, I didn't have the time to look side-by-side, but we're starting to creep back up again. So that feeling, I think Shannon and Caroline have always been strong advocates of...
I'm just staring at you.
We, we may start with a smaller-than-average kindergarten class, but as we start to climb up, the grade levels, we pick up a few kids every year, and that number becomes more in the normal range, so that's our very un-researched-based way of saying, I don't think that we're going to really dip. I think there's some thought that, looking at demographics statewide and nationally, that we're going to go through this real drop of enrollment, I don't, doesn't feel like it's going to happen, but feeling isn't a way to go about this, so we'll take a look at last year versus this year and see. We'll also probably update that, you know, the chart we used to use for school choice when it was really tight, that just kind of shows what's our percentage growth per year, we'll see if we can find some time to update that, so we can take a look, because I think it's going to be a big conversation with budget.
Yeah. How did that 58 new students shake out, sort of all over, or was it...
It has it right here. It's got it right there. Nine in ninth grade.
Whoa, really?
Yeah, a lot of kids came back.
And we had two, two...
Not that many left.
Three new seniors.
Yeah, I heard that there were new seniors.
There were four new seniors.
Four kids who came back for some new years.
Or moved in, we have some new residents, too.
So Pam, are we at the camera?
Yes.
What is the average, I know you don't have the numbers of, of kind of the move-outs, move-on, do you have a rough estimate of an average? No, perfect, because it varies so much year to year. Okay. Okay. And is the...
Yeah, I'd just be throwing out a number.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Okay.
So, we'll wait to hear, how many guys on...
Yeah, and I think the story we're going to have to start to watch is, down on the bottom you have all of those multiple-year, kind of, the school was built for 125, what our actual number were, we were tracking it for the middle school, I think we're going to start to see class size at the high school start to tick up, with a slightly different formula, because of all of the electives and being able to spread kids out more, but my last conversation with Tricia, she's got some 28s, and she probably, and she has some PE classes pushing over 30, so. The staff, we, because the numbers have come down at elementary, we've been able to make some, some cuts that don't feel like cuts, because they're usually tied to attrition, some changes in staffing, Jennifer's dealt with that this year, trying to have somebody, you know, take on new duty, so we're trying to do the best we can to manage the numbers, but by not replacing those FTE, it means we don't have the FTE to move to the high school, so elementary still may have to take, take a reduction, but the game plan was always to keep moving those things forward to where the bubble was going. So I think, it's, it's, you can see it really clean and easy at the elementary, in, at the high school it gets a little bit masked, so we'll have to start explaining that a little bit more. That's all I've got.
Okay. Anything else?
What was the date again of the Japanese delegation?
The 19th, it should be released Wednesday.
Okay. Thanks. Are they going to come and do the tours, and then a lunch, and all of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll get, I'll send the schedule out as soon as...
Perfect. All right, moving on. You're up.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us tonight.
Yeah, no, I'm always happy to come, this is a presentation about Essex Elementary School Improvement Plan. We just finished wrapping up a two-year cycle, so we wrapped up a school improvement plan and then just created a new one, just so you have a sense of the flow of what's happening. So, primarily what I'm hoping to do for you tonight is convey what did we accomplish over the two years of the completed school improvement plan, and then sort of bullet what our goals are moving forward for the next two years. So Pam gave me the perfect segue, I loved it, talking about, you know, the Boston Magazine and how well our students are doing, but then she spoke, you know, about the social-emotional learning of our students, and I'm really proud of the work that Essex has done in this regard, so if you look, and we are going old-school, so in case anybody's wondering, we're looking at a document here, we don't have the PowerPoint up, but, so the first page that talks about whole child up at the top, if you want to reference, that's sort of a visual. What I did is I bulleted each one of these bullets with something that we had as a goal within our school improvement plan, and I'm sort of reporting out to you. So the very first one, under the whole child, was the school psychologist, her name happens to be Dr. Welling, worked with specialists to support their work in social-emotional learning. Each specialist picked a grade level to support and used strategies that aligned with classroom instruction regarding the targeted focus area. So, just so you can understand that, specialists are going to see every child in the entire school, so as you're rolling out something like this, that's a big undertaking for them to think about, how am I going to have an impact on all of these kids? So, because we had asked classroom teachers to adopt a specific goal based on the needs of their classroom, we asked the specialists to sort of join forces with a particular grade level. So for example, like music, he sort of got in conjunction with what the third-grade teachers were doing, and then they worked together. So he was basically supporting the exact work that was happening in the classroom. Dr. Welling would come in and meet with the specialists and sort of help create that bridge and do some training for them, so I feel like it was really successful, and it was really cool for me to go in and do observations in the specialist classrooms and hear some of the same language, language that I was hearing in the, in the general life classroom. Secondly, Essex Elementary adopted a three-tiered model, so for years you heard me drone on about response to intervention, I'm not doing anymore, because I think we all know what that is. So our three-tiered model for social-emotional learning is the exact same thing as RTI, it's just sort of this tiered focus where all students are assessed, and based on the assessment data, we make decisions about whether they might need some additional support. But in the classrooms, all classroom teachers are working on this with all of their students, so that's tier one. Tier two is when students might be pulled out for a small group once a week with Dr. Welling on a particular social skill that we've kind of noticed that they might need a little support in. And then the third tier is really working directly with the school adjustment counselor, which would probably be a one-on-one kind of thing, so, so we're proud to say that we do, it's an assessment tool called the DESSA, we were doing it three times a year to screen all students, and we would actually look at the data at our data meetings when we're looking at math and reading assessment as well. And we did see, you know, there is sort of a connection with kids that are struggling in certain areas, and then how you see it play out when they're struggling in their academics, so we're very excited about that. So the third bullet, teachers focus on tier one instruction, so when they look at this assessment data, they can see how each student did, but they also can produce a chart that shows the aggregate, and it's color-coded, and you can sort of see, wow, my class is really doing amazing in this particular skill, but they might need support in a different skill. So then the teachers would make that determination and really support their class in that way. The school psychologist monitors student progress and provides teachers with ongoing feedback, so she's meeting with these students in small groups once a week, so she's constantly giving feedback to the classroom teachers about how students are doing. So this piece is sort of critical as we move forward. The staff has determined that a pull-out and a push-in model is more effective for students, so that they can generalize some of what they're learning. So like anything we do, we're learning, right? So the first two years we did this, pull-out, Dr. Welling worked with groups of kids, and then there wasn't a ton of generalizing back in, she'd meet with the teachers and they're like, that's great, they're doing that in your group, but when they're in the classroom, we're not necessarily seeing that. So what we started noticing is that it was much more helpful if there was a bit of a hybrid going on, where the school psych would work with the kids, but then she would push into the classroom where she could do some of this work with all students, so there was a little bit of a given and take, no different than special ed, what we noticed is that kids benefit from that. So, we're moving toward that model, all grade levels decided, instead of assessing three times a year, they wanted to do it twice a year. In the fall, they want Dr. Welling pushing into their classroom to do some of this work with all students. So, like anything we've done from year to year, we'll modify it based on feedback that we're getting from staff. Teachers routinely provide students with embedded movement breaks, that's not even worth discussing anymore, because it's so routine at our school that it's, I put it there because we did it, but you can check that box. Homework is no longer assigned to students, the expectation is for students to read a designated amount of time each evening and study for tests, they're also encouraged to play the everyday math games, and the last thing is that parents have access to the home links on the everyday math site, so if that's something that is of concern for them or of value as a family value system, they can print them out and then do that as well. So that is under the whole child, me reporting out on how we did. The next one, it's on the back, so you're following with me, student achievement. So we hold weekly progress monitor meetings, we call them common planning meetings, but it's where teachers get together and we look at student data and have discussions about student progress. Teachers routinely find ways to extend the learning for their high-achieving students. We're trying to start introducing project-based learning, because we find that's a great way to engage all students, but in particular the kids who might be more the high flyers that might be a little bit edgy, because, you know, maybe they're a little bored with what's going on, and that's always a challenge for a classroom teacher, you know, you have one outlier and you've got all these other kids, and boy, you know, you try planning for all those kids, it's tricky. So we've done some work with that, I think it's taking off in a few classrooms, and those folks are starting to share what they're learning and how they're doing, and that's often how things take off at Essex. And then the last thing on student achievement is, we completed the first two years of a literacy action plan, I don't know if you recall, but we had developed a three-year action plan based on an audit that we did. We finished the first two years, and more time is needed in this third year, as we wrap it up, to continue to focus on vocabulary instruction in all grades, and documenting a scope and sequence for comprehension in K-3. I will add that Dr. Riley has started a task force for language arts for the whole district, so what, we have teachers that have worked really closely on this, and that are on that task force, so we're trying to sort of dovetail it as a district, which is exciting for us, So we're trying to sort of dovetail it as a district, which is exciting for us because, you know, you don't want to see all that work. You did kind of get put aside, but it's a way of kind of bringing everybody together, so hopefully that'll be really successful. And, next page, climate. So it's funny, you have new people come to your school council and one of the members, the parent said, why do we have these safety things under climate? And we all looked at each other, I don't know. So I put a note on the bottom, we're actually gonna move this next year to community partnerships. It's sort of like it didn't have a place to live, so somehow it ended up here. But when you really think about school safety, isn't necessarily in terms of the physical safety of students fits under climate. The emotional safety, yeah, probably. So we continue to conduct fire drills, lockdown drills. We're actually doing an Alice thing with the staff September 26th. We, we practice an off-site evacuation, which is to the congregational church right on 133, right on the main street. We typically don't do this with students, we do it with staff. Fire drill we do because we do them out forever, but we do it with the faculty and all staff. And what we find is the students will do what their teachers instruct them to do, so it's really more about that. So then, okay, wait. Community partnerships is on the back. So our school council does a survey every two years, a full-blown survey where we get information from parents. But what we found is the year that goes in between, we sort of feel like we'd like to get a little bit of feedback. So what we do is we send out an open-ended question. We sort of list what the goals are, excuse me, for our school improvement plan. And then we sort of ask in an open-ended way, like, how are we doing on that? And we get anecdotal feedback, but it does help us to know, like, well, we're not doing a great enough job communicating this to families because they don't really know we're working on this. So we continue to do that at the mid-year point. We continue to focus on homeschool communication. I honestly don't know if we can ever do enough of it and finding ways to reach all parents because quite honestly, everybody has a different method that they appreciate. So I think we're trying to do a little bit of everything. We have teachers using Instagram and Shutterfly and their websites. You know, I, I think the blogging thing that I've done has been pretty well received from what I hear from parents. And then the last thing is, one of the things that had come up for a few years about bullying is that it appeared that parents didn't know enough about what we did, unless maybe their child got themselves in a situation and then they would know. But the general public, really, they kept saying, don't know, no answer, whatever, and we thought, that's interesting. So what I ended up doing last year, and I pulled it up today, I have to look at it again, is to send out something to parents, just sort of stating, you know, how does this work? You know, if your child comes home to report something, sort of, how does that play out? In a proactive sort of way, so they just understand. And the good news is most parents are not dealing with that. For the few that we are, they probably are the ones that know, you know, what's going on. So I'm trying to do a better job just from my desk, communicating to parents how that goes. So we at Essex Elementary try to provide targeted professional development for our teachers. I think we do a really good job of it. For example, the three-year literacy plan that we had for the last two years, we were able to hire a consultant from Stephanie Harvey Consulting. And she worked with teachers in grades one through five in the area of reading comprehension. It's great when you can get a teacher, she, I don't forget Ohio, I think she was from, and I guess she had some contract with this consulting company. When she came in to work with the teachers, they just ate her up because she lives in the classroom and she can make jokes about things that are legitimate and, oh, you don't want to try that, that's gonna fail miserably. And she's very hands-on, very approachable, and willing to respond to an email if a teacher has a question. So we had a lot of success with that. And the, the next bullet is teachers have also been provided with time to review the resources that are in the website, which it's the tool that I said that we use, to determine what kinds of things they could be doing in their classroom with tier one instruction for social emotional learning. So often I'll give people time and say, our focus today is you're gonna go into this website and you're gonna start looking at resources and see what you can pull out for yourself, because teachers don't have enough time to do those things. So we've done that. Is this my last one? And then, so that's a wrap-up over the last two years. So all last year, as a school council, we focused on creating a new two-year school improvement plan. And what I did is I sort of bulleted the key features for you. And this is based on survey results, information from staff, any data we could put our hands on. So the first one is to strengthen the partnership between special education and general ed teachers to better meet the needs of individual students. So we did some work as a staff with Kathy Pacaro, which I'm guessing you've heard that name at this point. And she gave us some research to show that students who are often pulled out for special ed services, if they're pulled out for the entire block, what they're missing is the higher-level thinking part. And, you know, while I say this, it seems pretty obvious, sometimes we get mired in the traditional way we do things and then we don't stop and think about that. So we have some students, this really affects kids mostly in the upper grades. So if you're in fourth or fifth grade and you're still having trouble decoding, and that's your disability, and you're pulled out because you need to have very specific sequential instruction in that area, but you're missing the conversation that's happening in your classroom, whereas you might be a very bright student who's able to do this work and think about it and respond to things, you're missing that opportunity. So as we started to talk about this, our special ed teachers did a great job of saying, okay, we're gonna make a decision with the general ed teacher to swing in for about 15 minutes. And they started carving this timeout. They would go in for when the teacher was doing the direction, direct instruction, maybe a comprehension strategy that they're working on, maybe they had a read-aloud. And then when they would pull the student out for the, say, half an hour, 45 minutes they were out, they would find a way to weave in everything they just heard that was happening in the classroom on a higher level. I can tell you anecdotally, when I would go in and watch this, some of the children that were pulled out were the ones that had their hands up with some of the most profound responses that you could hear coming out of the students' mouth. So I think it caught on, folks realized it was a really valuable thing to do. So we're gonna continue to try to look at that, figure out how we can shore that up and make that accessible for everybody. Second one, develop a cohesive K-5 approach to balanced literacy. This is the final year of our three-year plan. And I say in conjunction with the task force, because when we started this, there wasn't a task force, now there is. So we're trying to kind of take the third year of our plan and, you know, weave it in so that we're all kind of working in the same way. Third, roll out ruler model for emotional intelligence with students. So last year, as you all know, we did it with adults. This year, we're gonna do it with students. I just sent an email out to parents saying, please come to Open House because we're gonna do a presentation for you. At Open House, the ruler team, which they deserve a big shout-out. This is purely voluntary and the hours that we have put into meeting and planning, it's been just really amazing. So we're gonna roll this out with students. The teachers have all made commitments to timelines of what they're gonna do and when they're gonna do it. So we're excited about that. We're gonna continue to modify the social emotional support model that we use, which is what I was saying to you. Each year, we sort of evaluate, how's it going logistically? Are we seeing the kids sort of generalizing this information? Continue to provide targeted PD for staff on building base needs. That sort of goes without saying, but we said it. And the last one here is to develop more inclusive school-wide practices. So we continue to look at inclusive practices for all students, whether it be, you know, socio-economic, whether it be gender, whether it be, you know, ethnicity. And we're having a lot of really good conversations. We had a training for the staff last year about gender inclusiveness. And we showed a movie that could have hurt a pin drop. We've been working with a consultant that Pam has, you know, worked with in the district, Jeff Parati. So we're gonna continue to talk about this and look at things in terms of traditions and practices that maybe are near and dear to our heart, but if we peel back the layers, we start realizing that with all we know, they're maybe not as appropriate as they used to be. So that's hard to do. And the areas of concern, I have two. It's the funding issue, you know, the math specialist and the math interventionist at Essex. I'll just put it on there every year because I have to, it's my responsibility. And the continued need for the social emotional supports for students, that I'm just saying that it's pretty noticeable, the trend that we're facing. And it's across the board, every school that you talk to folks, because I've talked to other principals and they're all seeing it. And they mostly say the last three years, three to five, that the pendulum swinging and the students that are coming to us in the primary grades. And often what's tricky in kindergarten is you don't know students until they arrive. And then all of a sudden, you know, you're starting to notice that there's some needs there and you gotta step up your game a bit, so. So that is Essex in a nutshell, and you guys did awesome, you didn't ask me any questions. But Annie's like, all right, let me add.
Thank you very much. I love when you, you always give these examples of people trying something and then everyone jumps on the bandwagon. Oh, that's a great idea, I'm gonna try that. I love that that is the culture at Essex Elementary. And I think that says a lot to everything that you're doing. So with that, I will open it up to questions. Annie?
Hi. The homework thing, I never ever want to talk about this again, but it's, it's, it's worksheets that are not assigned. There's still, you know what I mean? I, I think there's, I don't know if we have to tighten up the language with it, but I just don't think there's confusion because people saying to me, I want homework, and it's not as if there isn't work to be done at home. It's not a worksheet, and I'm wondering if we need to clarify the language on that.
So if you peel back the layers, it really boils down to one math worksheet. It's not, everything else has remained the same consistently about asking students to read, that there's some project that's being done in school that maybe a student needs a little more time on. Their students are studying for tests, they're being taught in the classroom how to study for a test. So where it really boiled down is that often, and this is how the subject came up a few years ago, is that, one, the everyday math program for parents can be a little challenging because it's very different than how we learn. Two, it's a spiraling curriculum, so for a student who maybe struggles a little bit or is a special needs student, if they didn't totally own it that day and now it's going home, it can be a source of tension for the family. And that's how we started to look at this. So really what happens, because I certainly understand why parents might want homework, I liked doing homework with my kids. It was like the goofy time that I enjoyed at the dinner table after you cleared the table and you sit and everybody does their homework. And I remember giving my toddlers crayons so they'd have homework too. So I don't not value it, but I think when we started looking into what the research said, we really started struggling with this a little bit. So what we've done is we've made those worksheets accessible to parents so that if I meet with a parent that says, I'm really upset about, I can say that you really can print it out every night and sit and work with your child on this. We're not denying you that. So the teachers often are doing these home links as a station within their classroom. So I don't think there's a big disparity with what you see really in terms of, you know, how we're whole operating. I don't think our children are getting any less in the math world than maybe, you know, our counterparts.
Follow-up question? Have you heard from any sixth-grade parents coming back to you and saying, gosh, my kid didn't feel prepared for sixth grade?
No. And I also have checked in. I did check in with Joanne Mayna, because I said, all right, hit me, you know, let me know. And she went snooping around and talking to teachers. And what's interesting, one teacher that might have said something was math. Which is interesting, because if you were gonna see a problem, that's where you would have seen it. So I've asked Joanne to keep an eye on it and keep the dialogue open, you know, you certainly don't want to do something if it's gonna be at all detrimental to the kids. But at this point in time, I checked in with every teacher and not one teacher has seen any scores take a decline in math. As a matter of fact, one teacher told me they're higher than what they've been. Whether, I mean, it's obviously a different group of kids year to year, but nobody has reported that, whoa, our everyday math unit test scores are going down. And I've really been diligent about checking in. You can't really quantify this, and that's the thing, if somebody wants you to do a real study, how do you know that, you know, there's not some other variable that you're not controlling, or you could stay up too late, or, you know, who knows? So, yeah, I mean, I know it's, it's a, it's a question. I would tell you, there's, the feedback that we would get that's even remotely negative from parents on our survey is more, well, it used to help me know what my kid was doing in math. And what's interesting is that the, the teachers are supplying that to parents, maybe they're not accessing it, right? So if you have the ability as a parent to say, okay, we're on unit one, here's what we're doing, whatever. So I did say to the teachers this year, maybe you can step up your game a little bit, start.
I don't mean it's blame-feeding, but maybe making it a little easier for parents to see this information so they don't have to go hunting for it? Because I think people are busy and they don't want to do that.
But I can see where Annie's coming from.
It's about the language.
It's the language that you say here, like, if I pulled this up on the internet not knowing, it says, teachers do.
There's no homework.
There's no homework. I mean, that, I just changed how you're phrasing.
So I don't think I said there's homework.
Homework is no longer assigned to students.
It's not assigned.
But, okay, I, I just, I'm in agreement with Annie, that just how it's being phrased might be.
It might be yours.
There are expectations.
We're processing still. So I don't think it's a dialogue that's not. I'm just throwing it out there and I, I, thank you.
And we're down to, like, Jen was the pilot school.
Yeah.
And then somebody picked up and ran with the story, which made something seem much more drastic than it really was. And I know Julie worked with the curriculum leadership team all last year. And I think they processed and processed and processed. And we're down to, you know, do we say will or do we say shall? So it's not like it's not, there's due diligence behind how do you frame it? So it's inclusive of what we do throughout the district, but it's not so limiting that if there's a special project in a class and somebody wants to send some work home, that they can do it. So I think it's ever-evolving.
If you keep reading, it's very, it explains. If you don't keep reading, which most people don't.
So some are too open-ended and some are too tight, you know? So will feels too tight in some cases.
And it's tricky for us because, like, I would say we've had overwhelmingly favorable feedback. So I think now trying to create a bridge, if we went backwards, I think there'd be this incredible pushback. So it's, it's, you know, interesting.
I think it's just semantics. If three years out, we may be in a different place, or we may have a different report. Or it may be like, yeah, now we need to tailor it back because there's a lot of benefit to it.
I think it has to work itself through a process.
What exactly it is.
Right.
Can I keep that? Yeah, sorry. The bullying thing, I really love the fact that you're clarifying what bullying is. And I'm wondering if there should, does this happen district-wide? Because it seems to me we've got a lot of people throwing bullying around and it really is very specific.
So one of the things we talk about a lot with the improvement plans are they're here to kind of report on projects they're working on in their school. And they tend to, we all tend to be aligning, because I know Joanne's working on it as well, is a concern for Trish and John. But everybody's kind of gonna go at it at their own pace. So I would say that the district, I just had an article that I was getting ready to share as part of my weekly Out to Parents about the definition of bullying versus just kids being mean.
Yeah.
So I think it's, we talk about it a lot more recently than ever, than we have in the past. It seems like, I don't know if you feel this way, but like, all the bullying stuff came out and there was like this big surge and a lot of discussion and it tapered off. So yes, it's something that we're talking about.
Should we have the same language from school to school?
We do. I don't think the problem, I'll be frank, is not inter-school definition, it's.
School out.
Well, it's just social media, social realm, and, you know, needing, needing a label for something because you want some action. You know, so I don't think anybody's doing it, misusing it purposefully. It's just a reaction to something when you feel like your child's been hurt. But I think most things that come to the principals have been investigated and found that it was not nice behavior in many cases, but not something that there's a power dynamic or a continuous targeted effort going on. So two things, well, one thing coming up in October is Josh Gunderson is on the docket for this year. Julie's, Julie Riley, Julie DeRoche, we'll come back to Julie Riley. That's who Dr. Riley is.
I was wondering who Dr. Riley was.
Okay. Is trying to pin down times for both, similar to what we did last year with Mark having a student presentation and then giving a presentation of her parents. So October's Bullying Awareness Month. So he's someone who kind of gets at the heart of the differences in behavior versus bullying, bad behavior versus bullying. So yes, on our radar is the short answer.
Yeah, closer than that.
But so more to come on dates and times for that.
Okay. Outlook, I, I like that you have this partnership about SED and general education teachers. I wondered, you know, when we were talking to the really nice person who did the evaluations in the elementary and middle, Colleen Dolan, was saying that really one of the other areas is general education teachers understanding some of the practices that they can put in place in the classroom to help students before they're identified with needs. And I wonder if you could speak a little bit about that? Because that seemed to me the crux of that evaluation was that the general ed teachers need to learn from the SED teachers some tactics and some strategies. Is that?
Middle school.
Middle school, but not, not in elementary?
I feel like, I mean, you know, granted, having RTI in place helps with kids that might be struggling in a specific area. It's not the be-all and end-all. But, you know, as the elementary folks have really worked on being able to differentiate their instruction, they're really good at it. So, you know, they know when they're delivering a particular math lesson that if they have kids moving through stations, they're gonna have to mix those stations up based on the kind of needs and the levels of the kids that are in front of them. So, but I do think putting this as a focus and having the special ed teachers in the classroom for a set period of time, they start developing a good rela- in the classroom for a set period of time, they start developing a good relationship, which they already have. But, and then they can start sort of feeding off of each other. And you do grow professionally when you open yourself up to that kind of experience, so.
And just one final thing. Can you just tell me what, what is the, this SEL supports that you need? Like what is that? What does that look like?
Personally, I feel like, you know, your numbers can be small in terms of your school population, but your needs aren't always completely, you know, we're a small school. So I remember a couple of years ago, you know, at the admin budget meeting, I was talking about the need for a full-time counselor. Because if you remember at that time, I think, I don't know, it was .6. And, you know, I just had a bunch of evidence to show Pam and Avi and the rest of the team the degree to which we needed this, which had nothing to do with we're the smallest school. So I was able to sort of justify it by saying the number of 51 As that might be filed or the, we didn't list names, but all the different trauma experiences that maybe students have been exposed to. So by having that data, you sort of look at, all right, you're small, but, you know, you need the support. So luckily, we now have a full-time counselor. But I also feel like this realm is, it's big. And the more we want to do a good job of supporting students, pushing in the classrooms, doing some co-teaching. Debbie Welling is one person. And if you think about the school psychologist, she does all the testing for students, for IEPs. Then she attends all those meetings. So you start limiting the window of time that she can actually be working with small groups of kids and going in the classroom and doing co-teaching. You know, in the perfect world, we would probably have additional staff. Right now, I know better than to be asking for that. You know, we're, we are where we are and we're doing a good job.
Yeah.
But I think to be able to have maybe another person who could be sort of in that world, social emotional support, where they could be working in classrooms and especially classrooms where, like, we have the swing program. So we have two behavioral specialists who run that program. But they're specifically targeted for kids on IEPs who qualify for that program. If all of a sudden you have a child who's experienced some trauma in third grade and their behavior sort of goes off the rail, you know, you don't have somebody to do that. So you're going to rely on the school adjustment counselor, sometimes the school psych. And our two swing teachers are amazing. I can grab them and say, I'm really major help. But, you know, Allison certainly is protective over their time because that's not, that's not what they're paid to do. So I just think if we can start looking at shoring up that end of things a little bit. So it would just probably be staffing and sort of resources to help teachers look for needs. Because sometimes I feel like the teachers can be drowning if they happen to have a class that's got a lot of those needs.
Well, that said, I don't want you to feel like you can't ask for it. We need to know that stuff. I mean, yes, we are in a tight budget year. We want to know what you guys need. And we don't want you to feel, oh, I can't ask for that. Ask for it. We will, we will try our best to get it for you. Maybe not this year. Maybe we can get it the following year. But don't ever feel like you can't ask.
Yeah, no, I can.
Because we want to know what you need.
Yeah. So that would be it. And I don't even know if I'd say a behavioral specialist because I think I'd want a little bit of that coupled with somebody who can do this, maybe some of the teaching and the groups and the training. So I probably want a little bit of both.
SEL teachers are a thing now.
They are a thing now.
SEL teachers, really?
And coordinators for districts.
Sure.
And so that, there's another one. Like, you know, we talked about, I would love to have someone, whether it be a stipend or whatever, to be the coordinator of this. Because what happens is there's a lot of moving parts. And I do quite a bit of it, but then so do other people. And it'd be nice to just have one person who does that so that they can keep all the rulers stuff together and then these groups that Debbie's doing and sort of in one nice bucket and that's where it goes. And then I'm supporting that person, but.
You don't even have a health teacher.
Right.
And that could be, there's a lot of different ways to package it. I think, I'll make the plug, Math Interventionist has been on there for years. You know, we're just never hitting, going back to the only conversation, we're never hitting that second tier of, we're not even at nice to have, you know, we're at what we need, then what we should have. You know, every cut we make, we're pulling further away from what we should have. And we're never getting into that outer realm of this would really put us over the top into helping us fulfill goals.
Not even put us over the top. It would help us.
Feed the need.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not putting us over the top. It's, it's.
So we're still, now we're back to the core and making sure we have enough teachers to keep class size within benchmark.
I mean, when we first started RTI nine years ago, when I would put the schedule together for the grade levels for who was available, we call it when, for when time group, I remember back then there were like 12 people that I could pull for half an hour, 13. So man, you had, you had no problem. We're down at some grade level to like six. So what happens is when we're starting to look at kids' needs, we have to almost prioritize, you know, where's the greatest need? Because we can't service all these kids. So that's where that differentiation piece comes in. And Annie was asking about it. It's like, you're not going to get that, so the teachers are going to own that in the classroom. And they're having to up their games because now they know they need to be doing this with the smaller kids. And they've readily been doing it, but, you know, they're being tapped on a lot of levels.
I think what's really impressive about what we've done, I know there are equally as many other programs that you started that are on, you know, it's kind of the, again, Essex Elementary is a small school, but regardless of the format or the teachers, you seem to be always managing to look at appropriate content and meet the needs. And as I echo what Shannon says in terms of, don't hesitate to ask her to even, the fact that you put it on here, you see the essence of your stuff.
Well, I just figure I'll be diligent too.
Yes, yeah.
I understand, but.
Yeah, so just in order, because I know you have this time thing now, which is good.
Apologies for the ad cut out.
For, I always want to thank you for a parent who didn't have a kid who went through Essex. I always feel like I know Essex, having you deliver. So thank you very much. It's very helpful for someone like me. One thing I want to thank you, thank you for mentioning is the, um, catching the high achieving children in their mother's school. And my question to that is, so it sounds like you're just kind of dipping into that now. When, so when will that like be really like mainstream?
Well, I'd like to tell you that it is.
Like what's the, oh, okay.
But where I would say we're just starting to dip in in the last year of the project-based learning. And we happened to have a teacher join us who was very skilled in this area. And once again, like Shannon said, got a little contagious. And then you start sprinkling it around a little bit and talking about it. And the next thing you know, there are a number of teachers saying, that's really cool. I want to know more about that. And it starts taking off. So I would say that's an area where the teachers before were finding creative ways to sort of accelerate the high achieving kids. And it was clear from the feedback we were getting, mostly from parents, that if they had a child like that, they were like, yeah, my kid's a little bored. Of course, nobody wants to hear that. But it is a challenge for teachers to do that. So we had a few good teachers really take off with that. And then when this other staff member came on board and started explaining project-based learning, that sort of took off. So I'm hoping we can continue to sort of fuel that a bit because it's an exciting way to learn. It's very unique.
Just like tonight, you said RTI. I mean, my first job in school committee is when you're rolling that. You're like, yeah, that's like old hat.
Yeah, we haven't really talked about that.
I'll be here nine years, but I feel probably excited for when you say.
Sure. Well, I'll plug for Jen. I mean, the maths, something like a maths specialist or interventionist is where you can start to achieve a breakout that's not always just remediation, but also.
Right. And we don't have that. But, you know, I can give you an example. One of the fifth grade teachers, she took a cluster of kids that were really at that point. So the way it works is they get pre-assessed, at least in this classroom, on a unit test. And they have to get like 98, 99, or 100, or the teacher teaches. If a kid's showing that there's teaching points, you know, it's great, you're high achieving, but there's some content here you don't know, so you're going to hang with us. But if somebody's really showing that without instruction, they already own all of this, then. So she developed, she wanted to do a school store. I wasn't thrilled because I'd done that in the previous district. Yeah, no, it didn't go well. So I was like, no, can't do that. I'm like, just trust me, you can't do that. But what about, and what she ended up doing, it was such a great idea. What if you did like a coffee cart for staff? So they did it every, I don't know if it was Friday, whatever day of the week it was. This thing took off. And then the staff would be really bummed if it didn't happen. But the kids ran the entire thing. They did all, they had to do a pitch to me. They had to come in and sell it as, you know, this thing they were going to do. One of the little girls loves to bake and she started baking scones and banana bread. And then she, the teacher got a parent volunteer.
Great. So she'll be here next year.
Oh, I'm telling you. Oh, she's here now. Oh, she's here now. So what ended up happening was this thing that was really intended to be a project-based learning experience because it was rooted in, you know, real learning. Students had to do every aspect of this. They had to do the math, they had to do all the prep. There were some things you'd see that would tank a little bit because they didn't figure things out and they'd forget to do things and then they'd figure it out. It ended up going on like to the end of the year because the teachers loved it. So of course now all the teachers are joking with this one teacher, like, you're going to do that again. It was such a great opportunity. But that's an example of something that worked really well for this particular class that had, I would say it was like three students that really needed something more and different and engaging often at work. So we're hoping that'll, that's what I'm going to fuel.
Okay. That's good to hear.
Yeah.
I think Annie hit on all my other ones. I think that's it.
Great.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Good mine though.
Great.
All right.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Okay. So we don't have anything on our new business, right? So moving right along. Memorial School Elementary School, project building, project budget borrowing. Say that ten times fast. We've got a vote to approve the language on that. So, let's see, we have this, right? How do you want this vote is? Do you want it to be three different?
So really, all you need to do is to approve the two portions that are school committee, which is the first two paragraphs. The rest is just to give you an update of what we will be sending to the towns. You're welcome.
This is separate.
Yeah.
Go on, sorry.
So, and so the rest of it is just what goes to the towns. And I just copied you all on it so you'll be aware. I haven't sent it to them yet. I want to make sure that we do our part first. So maybe we can make a motion to approve the vote to appropriate the budget for the Memorial Elementary School and authorize borrowing in the same amount of 52.2 million less any prospective MSBA grant. And using the language that was shared in school committee and has been sent to MSBA for approval and subsequently approved by MSBA.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah.
Second. Discussion on this? Do we have to do it all in favor first?
Yeah, discussion.
Discussion. So you just made a motion to appropriate. But we, how do we appropriate something that the two towns have not authorized?
So there's two words in here that are key words. One is appropriate, which is essentially equivalent in auditor language and MGL for budget. And authorize, which is a word that's really close along with borrowing. And so you, every year when you vote the final operating budget, you appropriate that money. It still has to go to the respective towns for their vote. And their vote does a couple of things. It agrees to the appropriation, which is the budget. They don't typically have to do that, but they do. They vote their assessment for that amount. So in this case, the language below talks about what the towns are going to do. They're going to essentially, once we agree, they're going to approve the appropriation and authorization for borrowing that was voted by the school committee. They're really just approving the vote that you have taken.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to, I wanted you to say it. People who are listening, school committee has to first decide if it wants to enter into this budget before it seeks approval from the town to support it. So this is set on. Great. And we're voting on the first voted language in this proposed.
I would ask, you vote on both of them. The first one is all the MSBA language of the budget amounts and the appropriation and the authorization. And the second just notifies as is required that we have to pass on this information to the Board of Selectment within seven days so that they can go through their process with their county meetings. And obviously, once this is approved, I'll make sure to send an email tomorrow.
Great. Okay. So do you want me to say it twice for two votes?
One vote to approve the language as submitted for appropriation of the school project and authorization of borrowing.
So we're done. So all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstained. Okay. And then the second vote we have to take is a motion that within seven days from today, we notify the Board of Selectment that each of the member towns of this district as to the amount and general purposes of the debt here unauthorized as required by the agreement, blah, blah, blah.
Someone second?
Yep. In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I just didn't, what?
I just sent her the language.
Oh, good.
Usually she's very patient with me and waits and waits and waits.
No service here. So next, we're going to move on to Pam's evaluation that we kicked from last week or last meeting to this meeting. So if you will indulge me, this is the first time I've done this, so excuse the fits and starts here. But we are going to, Pam, I sent this to you earlier. I can't remember if I was able to send, Annie was able to get me an actual attachment. Did I get that to you?
I got it to Google Docs.
Okay. I will get an actual attachment to everyone, an actual, rather than the Google Docs. Because Google Docs.
I was getting dog.
Huh? Yeah, sorry. That's why it was screwy. Because I couldn't figure out how to do it for my MRSD. That's my, that's my secret email. Okay. So Annie, jump in if you need to give me any guidance here.
You're doing great.
Great, thank you.
Excuse that first paragraph.
Alrighty. So looking at this, I'll just go through it very quickly. MERSD is thriving under the steady conscientious leadership of Pam Bovler. Pam is constantly striving to better the district, improve operations, improve communication, hire strong accomplished people to fill openings, support current staff and students, and is impressively knowledgeable on all fronts. Pam never shies away from outside evaluations and takes findings as missions towards bettering the district. This year, she impressively juggled her typically packed duties while masterfully handling the addition of a school budget building with the MSBA and the School Building Committee. That definitely is worth noting. That's tremendous. Pam simultaneously led the effort to settle a one-year contract with MITA and set the stage to negotiate a three-year contract that will benefit all stakeholders beginning in the fall. Pam also cultivated a truly productive relationship with the Ipswitch YMCA for after-school and vacation programming that is flourishing and benefiting students and families. And finally, Pam has led the effort to prepare the MRSD staff to implement the ruler program out of the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence this coming fall in an effort to focus on the social and emotional health of our students and community. Pam works hard to ensure that students are supported to perform academically to the best of their ability while also maintaining a balance that allows them to mature, grow, and be valued as individuals. The staff as well is a group of individuals who are simmerly, I can never get around that one. Simmerly, whatever, you know what I'm saying, respected and supported to develop professionally. Pam is not afraid of conflict and manages it appropriately without stifling dissent or contrary opinions. The culture at MRSD is one of continuous improvement where all stakeholders are encouraged to grow and provide existing and new tools and perspectives to help. Pam consistently seeks outside evaluations and uses the results as action steps toward improvement on all fronts. We feel lucky to have such a thorough, thoughtful, knowledgeable, and dedicated superintendent to work with and to lead the district. Fantastic job.
Thank you. But it's a team. None of that gets done without a team. But thank you.
The first page. A quick synopsis of looking at the scores. This one? Yeah. So in terms of the ratings under professional practice, it is felt that Pam has met the expectations. Should I go through each one?
Sure.
Under professional practice, utilize interest-based bargaining methodology to renegotiate the MITA contract. Met. Student learning, again, met. And those bullet points are assess quality and provisioning in targeted areas of the academic program. Met that goal. Support the implementation of curriculum and training to support district goal of providing a coordinated approach to social, emotional learning. Met. And I would say that's definitely something that's still, we're still working on that. District improvement, overall met. Bullet points there are develop and pass a budget that addresses impact of significant increased healthcare costs on instructional program. Yeah, we did that. Carry forward. healthcare costs on instructional program. Yeah, we did that. Carry forward. Implement MSBA feasibility phase of a memorial building project and ensure a capital and maintenance plan is in place to ensure upkeep of the Essex Elementary School. Met that as well. And under the first standard of instructional leadership?
No.
You already did. That's a seven.
Oh, that's.
You did.
Thank you.
But that was great.
So do you know what this, this is?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome. My takeaway was, I think we're all on the same page with cultural proficiency and diversity is something we want to get better at.
Yeah. And I think Ruler will help us kind of define exactly what we want to do there and how we want to do it.
Can we talk a little bit about that? Because I think it's more than that.
It's definitely more than that.
There are other things that we can adopt or we can try to implement that force, because I'm, we're dealing with this at work as well. You know, it's hard to find people to want to work here. But there are strategy, there are things that we could probably try that we don't try now. And it takes longer, and it's a different kind of effort. I just think we can, and I'm interested in some of the stuff that's happening elsewhere, like Framingham is doing a diversity audit. I mean, I'd love to know, what does that mean? What does that look like? And, you know, what can we do to kind of force ourselves to do some things that we haven't had frankly, the time? Or it takes a long time to do that kind of stuff. I think it takes years to kind of implement those things. But I think we can try some different strategies.
Yeah, I think we need to understand, like, I think the diversity audit may be a little different than what.
Yeah.
Because I think they're learning, they're trying to figure out how to deal with multiple populations that they have and reconcile differences that exist among, among them. I think we're more, I think we're still, we've talked about it in thought. I think we're still trying to deal with the different populations that we have. So that's a good first step. So our personal experience, socioeconomic differences, some cultural differences. We talk inclusion, we end up talking about the academic side, but I think there's also the piece about accepting people who are different than us in an environment. I think when Tricia comes in and does her improvement plan, they, they're launching their ADL initiative this year, which is going to be, I think, a nice step in the right direction. And what I'll try to do for October is have that comprehensive document that shows the things that we are doing. So maybe we can do an assessment of what's effective and what isn't anymore, the missing pieces are. And then learn what other districts, like districts are doing. So I think Framingham's makeup is a lot different than ours. But what are other districts, maybe like the Concord, Carlisle, or Hamilton, Wyndham, or someone that kind of fits our demographic profile? How are they approaching it?
And geographically, I think we have to be honest about, you know, Manchester's not an easy place to get to. So, you know, maybe that is another knock in terms of being attractive, an attractive place to work.
So you're talking about the higher report?
Higher, higher. I mean, I think, you know, you got it at many different levels, right? So I just think that there's some things that, there are interesting things that other organizations are doing that we could look at and see, is this something we could try or adapt to our?
Containment, yes.
Yeah. The other thing, and I probably am, this is probably not politically correct, but I'm fascinated by this, the whiteness project kind of work that's happening. We are very homogeneous populations. And I wonder, you know, if not, I don't know if the school would want to go there, but if the community would want to do something like that. I just think those, there's some interesting conversations out there that I think that would be interesting to listen to.
So in wrapping, just personally, I want to say thank you because I know this year has been, well, I can't use the language on TV, but I know this year has been a tremendous, tremendous strain with budget and with the MSBA project being much more than I think anybody, anybody had, you know, anticipated. So the fact that you were able to put together a terrific.
He gets a ton of credit though. He's really been doing most of the MSBA work.
We all.
Say thank you first.
Thank you.
Point to him.
Couldn't do without a team.
Yes. But put together, you know, an incredible academic and, and social, emotional curriculum is tremendous given.
Got a really strong team and a really strong.
We do, but the strong team is led by a strong leader.
And it's a great privilege to help coordinate it all and get it included. So thank you for your support. And a great school committee. I mean, you, we talk about it a lot, probably, don't share enough, but we feel tremendous support from the school committee and what we do. And the whole thing kind of just jells together forward progress. So it's a great community. And it's the beginning of the year, and we're all rested from last year. Because we were tired of the.
Bring it on.
I'm kidding.
So I think it's going to be another great year.
I'll have my goals for next year.
Okay. And we'll talk contract too. We're still trying to do the transition on that. So that hasn't been forgotten about. Looks like we are in pretty good shape. Let's talk about the goals really quickly. I know there was a lot of discussion around these last time. So it looks like we were able to tighten a lot of this up. And I'm wondering if you guys, A, are okay with the language and the order? I know Annie has.
Supposed edits.
So always, always, always happy here. Let it rip.
First, I, I, I love different fonts, but I prefer one font.
You typed this on the fly last time.
I did?
Yeah.
Oh.
Your turn.
Support, I, I went, number three, support programming. But I don't know what implementation programming is, so I don't know if that was.
Support implementation of programming?
Or is it implementation of?
I was trying to, we were trying to pick the same time.
And organizations.
Yes, thank you. That's all I had. But is it implementation and programming?
Support implementation of programming that enhances our organization's cultural.
Well, why don't we just say support programming?
That's fine.
All right, that's fine.
Get rid of implementation. Programming that enhances our organization's with the thing.
Apostrophe S?
Yep.
Yep. Are we okay with the order?
Should we put the building project second or first?
The budget has to come in.
Okay. So previously, we've had social, emotional needs first. And it's, and I know we probably just want to mix things up for the sake of mixing things up or because we need to put the building first. But I love being able to tell people we put the social and emotional needs of our kids first.
I do too.
And I would argue that our, that's, it's still a priority.
And I would argue that they're all priorities.
Thank you.
And this really document doesn't really matter what, what is it counted?
Okay. So then we're not going to put numbers on it?
They're all are, like, one is more important than four.
Yeah.
I mean, there's so few. It's not like there's 20.
Okay. So there are no numbers on this, and they all carry equal weight. I like that answer.
Can you talk to somebody about fonts?
I'll talk to myself.
I'm trying to remember to even off those.
It's the same font.
Is that what it is?
I'm really small. I kind of feel like district policies.
Just remove the R T I's.
Yeah, because that's kind of a maintenance.
It is kind of maintenance. Does it even use the on there?
What?
The ongoing review of district policies as a goal. Like, that's just like getting a air.
I'm so bored with that.
Yeah, but you know what?
That can go, that's kind of the RTI for the school committee, which is, it was a big deal when we started because we had to do the entire policy book almost from scratch.
Because I was on that policy committee before.
Just take that one off.
I agree.
So along with all the others.
I agree.
And then I feel like all of them are.
It's established now. Now it's just maintaining.
Okay.
We're going to take that off then?
Yeah.
Well, the only thing about it will argue is that the job descriptions are on there and the auditors keep telling us that we need to do those job descriptions.
Yeah, but that can be a back pocket kind of thing. That doesn't need to be one of our stated goals.
I agree.
I see that on the audit. I think that's it.
Oh, I, yes. I just had to come up and then add a word, assured, things I forgot to say.
School committee comments?
School committee comments.
Great.
One, school committee comments, they're both short. One I had was that, I know that people were concerned about the loss of the additional later bus in Essex, but there have been some really positive parents setting up a Facebook ride board for after-school rides. And it's just really been super positive and helpful. That's excellent. That's one. My other one is, did anybody hear any feedback of complaint about the additional half-days that were added into the calendar?
I honestly don't think anyone picked up.
And I did not even read anything negative on social media as well.
Because you didn't look or because it wasn't there?
No, I mean, I'm trying to keep up with stuff, but I haven't seen anything.
Yay.
I just have two things on school improvement. And I just want you to think about this. I don't know if this is, do we want to have metrics included in the district improvement plan? Because people, you know, I've heard principals say, this is working, but we don't have any metrics to show that it is working. And I'm just wondering if, you know, going forward, we want to have metrics included.
Yeah.
I was thinking about that when, yeah.
So I'm just going to float the idea. We have a few more to listen to, but maybe after we're done, yeah, maybe it's, we can parking lot this, but it might be, the metrics come in a whole separate presentation.
Yeah.
So Julie comes in with the metrics that are there to support a lot of what the school improvement plans are reporting on.
Yeah.
So maybe we start to marry the two together.
I think a lot of it is hard because our schools are just so small that even when you start to do percentages and numbers, when you have 50 kids in a grade, it's so different measuring one grade than then three years later, you're measuring a totally different group of kids. So.
Yeah. I mean, I still think that there's some value in.
Hard data.
Yeah. Especially when we have MCAT scores that tell us that we're struggling in certain areas, or that there are other metrics that tell us that we're struggling. And so we're implementing, implementing new practices. So how does it circle back and address the data that we saw that told us that there was a problem somewhere? Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Does that make sense? It does make sense.
Yeah, it does. The problem, the, SEL is going to be hard to measure.
Yes.
And I don't know if you guys were still there when Christina Cipriano, the opening day speaker, started talking about it, that they're looking at everything but some type of sit-down assessment to measure it. So they're coming up with a lot of different concepts of how to use social media and feedback loops and things to see if there's progress being made. So it could just be identifying new ways of measuring it. So I don't know that we're going to get measurements that we want that boil down to a chart or graph for SEL. So I think, think about what you are, what you mean when you say metrics. What are you looking for for data?
I guess I'm just trying to see that, that the resources that we allocate or fight for show results. And what are those results that we can prove to people that, yeah, we asked you for this thing, and then actually you can see from the data that it's actually a worthwhile investment.
And if you have a heading.
Because everyone.
If you have a heading of student achievement, what have the students achieved?
Well, academics.
Should you be able to measure that?
Julie comes up with some of the data for some of it.
Yeah. Maybe we can say during that meeting.
You want to connect it?
Yes.
Connect Julie's presentation and want to think about connecting that to how it can be successful.
And just as, as a tangential thing on that, we talked a little bit about social, emotional programming, and Julie was putting together some sort of a graphic about how that, how it all is working together. And I would love to know what staff or resources are tied to those different aspects because, you know, we asked, we added an assistant principal in the middle school, and that person is doing some of that kind of work. You know, what Jen was talking about tonight with another counselor or needing additional services, you know, can we tie that to programming? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I get a little, well, we can park. Yeah, park. So I said one thing. Yes.
Pam, is this up on the website?
Okay, yeah, thank you. That was just the calendar. Yep, I know. Somebody else asked me that today too. Okay. It's going to go up. Okay, good. All right.
Cool.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Come on.
Take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Good, good.